Good morning, everyone. We are meeting for the Duchess County IDA. And at the beginning of the meeting, I'd just like to say, we are going to do an additional bit of business that is going to require suspending or adjourning the meeting temporarily while we go on to to LDC business. And at the conclusion of the LDC business, the executive session, we will come back into session with the IDA. And this has to do with the election of an officer executive director for the LDC. So we will, that will be the process for this period. So Jasmine, would you take the roll call for the IDA meeting, please?
Mark Doyle.
Yeah.
Amy Bondedieri.
Here.
Deidra Halston.
Here.
Tom Lacount. Jamie McComb. Brian Barryan.
Here.
Good. Are there any conflicts of interests?
I have had to recuse for Bill Parcel 7.
Thank you. Jamie's walking in. So. And Jamie is. Yeah. Add Jamie to the roll call, since we've just taken it.
Thank you.
Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning.
And I kind of just asked about conflicts of interest.
Gotcha. None.
Very good. And with that, proof of meeting notice going out. Any bills and communications? None. And the minutes, approval of minutes for September 10th? Already had a chance. Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. Jasmine, would you take the roll?
Brian Barryan. Jamie McComb.
Approved.
Deidra Halston.
Approved.
Amy Bondedieri.
Approved.
Approved. And then the report from the treasurer, the financial report.
Yes.
Would you like to give that, Jane?
Yes, I'm looking at the balance sheet. In cash, we have 3.6 million. But as you see below in the accounts payable, there's 1.1 million in pilot payments that were received and need to be going out, they're going out this month of October. If you look at the P and L, 164,000 to a budget of 309,000. So so far, we're unfavorable by 145,000. We have expenses of 500,000 to a budget of 747,000. So far, we're favorable by 248,000. At this time, we have a loss of 336,000 to a budgeted loss of 438,000. So far, we're favorable by 102,000. When reviewing the budget, we'll see what the estimated year end of 2025 will be.
Very good. Thank you. Accept the report from the treasurer?
No votes needed.
No vote needed. Thank you. And the, okay. So the report from committees, this is the time for the Finance and Budget Committee to approve the 2026 budget for preparation for submission to Paris State System.
And on September 29th, the committee met for the proposed budget.
Right. Committee Chair was Jamie.
Correct.
Would you like to lead off on that? Jane, your support?
Sure. I mean, a quick synopsis is we're basically templating last year's 2025 budget with the admin fee.
For one.
$175,000 is our estimate for next year. Compliance fees, other fees and interest. Basically, the same interest we're gutting down a little bit because of the interest environment. We're going to have an estimate of 111,000 for 2025. We had budgeted only 60. We're going to budget 65 to be very conservative, depending on the interest rate environment. The audit is a slight increase. Dues, insurance, miscellaneous other, all the same with last year, as well as professional service contracts, which is line 10 for 655,000. If you want to see a breakdown of the 655,000, you go down to the bottom half of the page, and you'll see the professional service contract, 655, broken down between the LDC, DTI and Hudson Valley Ag. That's the money that we disperse. Professional services, rent, traveling, marketing. Gives us total expenses of 764,000 versus anticipated revenue of 326,000. Gives us a net loss of 437,000. Again, we have strong reserves in our fund balance. And given this year and last year, we're predicting a deficit that we can absorb easily with the money we have in reserves. And maybe some of the admission, administration fees might be higher than we anticipate. As if you look at the 2024 audit, it was 705,000. So that is the Duchess County Industrial Development Agency budget for 2026. Jane did attach a summary for each line on the second page. If you'd like to review it. Our committee of Brian, Mark and myself met, like Jane said, on the 29th. I would like to make a motion to accept the 2026 proposed budget as stated on this document.
I'll second.
Thank you.
No surprises. So it's really. Yeah. Brian seconded.
Brian seconded, so we can go ahead.
Brian Barryan.
Yes, approved.
James McComb.
Approved.
Deidra Halston.
Approved.
Amy Bondedieri.
Approved.
Mark Doyle.
Approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to new business. Our first piece of business is for Built Parcel 7. And if we have. Mr. Tinkelman's outside. Mr. Tinkelman outside, maybe?
Yes.
We'll just invite him in. And this is, and you're, and Amy Bondedieri is going to recuse herself for the moment. Thanks, Amy.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Tinkelman.
Mr. Redd, next to your clock.
So this item, I'm going to spell it out, is for consideration and approval of the final authorizing resolution for Built Parcel 7 in the town of Akipsey, which is to approve a project providing for a mortgage tax exemption, sales tax and pilot for an approximately eight and a half million dollar project for the construction, development of a multifamily housing facility with affordable and market rate units consisting of 20 residential units at 44 Springside Avenue. So thank you for joining us. And I think, first of all, Jane and Don, is there anything that we would like to outline for us before I ask Mr. Tinkelman to work on this?
So I'm, last time when you adopted the preliminary resolution on this, we gave you the project history, since the Van Wagner project has been going on for some time. And so this is for the next phase of the project that they're ready to build. The one thing I just wanted to point out is the pilot schedule. It's slightly different than our standard schedule. It breaks out the portion of the project that's already part of a pilot.
Could you tell us which page to find that on?
So it's the exhibit to the resolution. If you look on page two of the exhibit, so it's Exhibit A2 is the page. And over page A2 and page A3. So you'll see the new portion of the project and the new construction is going to have a 15-year pilot that's equivalent to the other Van Wagner projects, the same as what was approved on those. But the breakout where there's that separate schedule is just for the construction that's already under a pilot agreement. They're not getting, they're not going to go back into a new pilot. They're going to stay under the existing.
So would that be Exhibit 2-3, the existing, the remain, or should we call it the remaining?
On A-3, that's the remaining pilot.
Remaining, right? And that's on Built?
It's currently with Built Parcel 4.
It's going to.
Okay, so then the new Built 7 parcel would be Exhibit A-2.
Right.
Okay. And a 15-year is deviated, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. And the percentages being somewhat different to our norm. But it's a deviated. So I wanted to just take a second to look at the, for the board and for just general discussion at the criteria for deviated pilot. And I actually asked Sarah Lee to spell that out for me a little bit. So the factors that we consider, that are considered, it's not so much assets, obviously, in collaboration with the municipality, is the size of the project, number of employees projected, the type of operation. Critically, the prospects to generate income and revenue through payroll and sales tax, and the extent to which that'll offset any loss in real property taxes. And of course, the support of the taxing jurisdiction. So when we do the cost benefit analysis, look at the return on investment of, essentially investing in the in the pilot and what the return is, we see that there is a positive return projected, even with the pilot, with the deviated pilot. So this is the rationale for that.
Thanks for that information.
And furthermore, in this case, you have added, Mr. Tinkelman, two affordable or workforce housing units. So that adds to the momentum for this application for deviated pilot.
Yes.
So I just wanted to spell that out.
Then the municipalities are.
Are supportive. Yeah.
Yes, with the application, the consents of the town and Arlington School District were submitted. And that's referenced in the resolution as well, those consents from the taxing jurisdictions.
Very good. Is there anything else from our administrative side that we would like to hear? Mr. Tinkelman, have you got any comments to add, information for us?
No, I appreciate you considering the request here. You know, we've done a lot of work with the town of Akipsey on this whole effort. This is the fourth project. Actually, these units were initially considered that were going to be across the street in our 44 project. But we found a better, more appropriate site plan there that was a little less dense. So these are the units, though, that were originally considered. But this is the fourth project as part of what we've done there. It gets us to about, some of them have been in your jurisdiction, some have been just privately done. But it gets us to about 80 units in the neighborhood and about 50,000 square feet, including a lot of not-for-profit organizations that are there. And again, you know, I am very appreciative of your consideration. And the earlier phases couldn't have worked without your support. And again, I think some of the lesson here is working with the town early on, you know, with that. And again, we got unanimous support from the town board for being here today. And also unanimous from the school district. And, you know, part of it was the ask, you know, by the town of Akipsey to work with them on some of the issues like the affordable stuff. And so that's where that came about. So we're approved and again by the planning board for the project as well. So again, thank you for considering.
Certainly. I think I'd just like to add also, you'd mentioned the request from the town. But my recall, recollection of it is that the county also developed an interest in town center development or new town center development. And so your project and also Eastdale sort of fits within that concept of the town centers. So we're moving forward in a planned collaborative way.
The, our project, of course, is smaller than Eastdale. But as part of what we're doing, it's not just constructing buildings, but we've been trying to create a walkable neighborhood. So it's been including sidewalks and public space. We, in the last phase, we built a public square that's part of the neighborhood. There's other amenities as well. And, you know, that's all part of, been rolled into the development here.
Very good. Great questions from members of the board.
I don't have any questions. I mean, I think we really went over this in the preliminary part. So I think we had a lot of good discussion then.
Excellent. So we'll take the vote, please.
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Final authorization for Bill Parcel 7?
I'll second.
Thank you. We do need that portion.
Brian Barryan.
Approved.
James McComb.
Approved.
Deidra Halston.
Approved.
Mark Doyle.
Approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great day in the meeting and all that stuff.
Procedure. Our next item of business is the consideration and approval of an authorizing resolution for MHTC Developments and 926 Duchess Turnpike for amendment allocating a portion of the mortgage tax exemption, sales tax exemption previously granted to MHTC for the next phase of their, for the next phase of their project and providing the pilot schedule for that phase. So that is stated a little differently to, on all my feel. So perhaps Jane, who's, Don or Liz, are you?
So this is just, it's the, because Eastdale is slightly different than what we do for the other projects, but this is typical to what's done on Eastdale, where anytime a new phase comes on, where the developer, MHTC Development, is not going to be the majority owner of that phase, they'll still have involvement. And if they're not necessarily going to be the majority owner, then it has to go to public hearing and board approval. But it's just an allocation of the previously approved overall benefits for the overall project being allocated over to this next phase of the project.
How many phases are left in this project? Is it undetermined or?
I know John Hegginger is on. He might be able to answer better than I can.
It should be about two, this being one of the last ones.
Very good.
What was, I didn't.
Sorry, I didn't.
Two more, so, yes, can you turn up the volume a little?
Well, yeah, welcome, John Hegginger, to the meeting. And not sure who else is with you, John?
Yes, Alex Frederick is with me. He's here on behalf of Prime E-Sale, which, as Liz mentioned, will be the majority owner of this project ultimately. And we really appreciate you having us in this morning and for rescheduling the meeting so promptly. But as Liz mentioned, we're talking about the allocation of benefits previously granted to MHTC Development to 926 Duchess Turnpike LLC, which is a 6,120-square-foot mixed-use building located on Duchess Turnpike, really kind of right at the edge of Eastdale overall. And the building will be occupied by Prime Wealth Management, Inc. On the first floor, sort of commercial component. And the second floor will be three apartment units consistent with the mixed-use profile of other buildings, other commercial buildings within Eastdale. This project, like many before it, is very consistent with the original plan for the Eastdale Village Town Center overall. We continue to be a significant champion of the owner-operator construct. And we'll look to, even though we're getting to the very end here, support owner operators throughout the project as much as we can. And as I mentioned, Alex Frederick is with me. Alex, would you like to say a few words about the project and about Prime?
Yeah, no, and again, thank you for having us. And thank you to the Duchess County IDA for your consideration of this project. And I know we're over at Prime incredibly excited about the prospect of expanding our operation at Eastdale Village. And just a note, without these IDA benefits, we would not be in a position to own our own real estate. So again, just want to thank you and really appreciate the IDA support. And thanks again.
Very good. One of the reasons for my asking was that that on the last line of the agenda, it says, item, it says, providing the pilot schedule for that phase. So I take it that there's really no change to it, you're just stating the.
Right, right. It's basically just copying over the pilot schedule and applying it to this particular parcel.
I just wanted to clarify that.
So is this Prime Wealth Management getting a 20-year pilot? Or are they getting the portion that's left of the 20-year pilot?
They're, each phase as it comes online, that's when the pilot kicks in.
Okay.
The phase, because it's based on the completion of the construction is when the pilot schedule actually kicks in.
Right, so they don't have a CO yet. It's not built, right?
Correct.
Correct.
And so.
Is it in progress?
No.
And so this is just the pilot for that lot, which is, I mean, the size of it, it's less than an acre. Wait, two, four, five acre parcel.
And it fronts on the.
Is this the one where the foundation is in, but it's not built, it's just a foundation?
Exactly. It's been there for a few years.
Yep.
It's 20-year deviated.
Yeah, which is what we originally negotiated with. So any other questions about that? Glad to have the village filling up with this form of ownership. Anybody like to make a?
I'll make the motion to authorize the final authorizing resolution for Eastdale Project 2018 Phase 3-N.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please, Jasmine.
Brian Barryan. James McComb.
Approved.
Deidra Halston.
Approved.
Amy Bondedieri.
Approved.
Mark Doyle.
Approved. Thank you very much and good luck with the rest of the construction.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
The next item is the consideration and approval of a preliminary resolution for Fifth Generation Partners LLC and the Hudson Company in Pine Plains, which I'm very glad to see and hear about, learn about, to induce a project providing mortgage tax exemption, sales tax exemption, and a pilot for approximately $9.8 million project for the expansion and construction of a manufacturing facility showroom space right in section of Route 82 and 83. Welcome to our meeting on Zoom, Jamie Hamel. And perhaps you could introduce us to the elements of this project?
Sure. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for having me. I apologize for the awkward lighting. I'm traveling in a hotel room as we speak. I am the owner-operator of the Hudson Company. I founded the Hudson Company on August 31st, 2010 in Pine Plains. We are a reclaimed and specialty wood mill. We dismantle barns and old factories and remanufacture the recycled wood for both private and public use. A few public projects that you may have seen of ours would be the Whitney Museum of American Art in New York City, or the High Line in New York City, or the O'May Art Center in the Hudson Valley, I think it's technically in Ghent, the Clark Museum, and lots of restaurants, bars, cafes and private residences. I started the business with myself and one employee on, who I found on Craigslist. And we are currently 25-strong. And we have been leasing a space on Route 199 in Pine Plains since I started the business from a very friendly, accommodating landlord. But the property is up for sale now and my lease is expiring in 2028. And it's our vision and hope to build and own our own property. I feel very fortunate to have the lease I have. But if you've ever visited us, you'll see that it's really not suitable for our business. A, we've outgrown it. B, there are not suitable break rooms or offices for our growing staff. And our mission is just, you know, we're in the architecture and design business. And we bring our, we create these beautiful products for our clients. But when we bring them to our mill, while they're impressed with the wood and our manufacturing capabilities, they're greatly underwhelmed by our facilities. So we have designed a much larger, much more beautiful, much more state-of-the-art manufacturing facility to be at the intersection of Route 82 and 83. We've been working with an architect named Brent Buck out of New York City. And I had submitted some slides to show you what this looks like. It's absolutely beautiful. It's sort of inspired by a Northern California vineyard, meaning we have about 10 acres, or we plan to have about 10 acres. And there will be walking trails through the property and wildflowers and sculptures and a 50,000-square-foot manufacturing facility where we can increase our capacity and hire an additional 12 people. So we'll grow our staff from 25 to about 37 over the next couple of years. The reason I'm here today, as you can imagine, is our project has expanded in scope. It's expanded in cost. The price of steel has skyrocketed since we started this project in the summer of 2024. And we're looking for support from the county to assist us with mortgage tax, property tax, et cetera. So I appreciate you hearing our proposal. And I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Very good. Ron.
I just wanted to add to this project. We've been working with Jamie for some time. So has New York State's Empire State Development, which has provided, offered assistance. We've been also working with Senator Henchy's office and Assemblywoman Barrett's office. They've been directly involved in this. I believe that, Jamie, if this is a successful project, you'll probably be the top employer in the town of Pine Plains. This site that he's going on is, has, I would say, long been blighted. Its last tenant was Titan Barrel, which did not make it and went out of business. This project would clean up the site. Unfortunately, something that we just learned about in the last 30 days is new DEC regulations that were enacted by the legislature in 2022 came into effect in 2025, while in the middle of Jamie's due diligence. And has, this is after application to the IDA, is putting this project, I think, in jeopardy. There's a great amount of uncertainty as to whether or not this project will go forward because of the timeline and additional costs or restrictions that the DEC may impose on the project. So we are actively working with the DEC. The senator and assemblywoman are setting up an onsite visit to tour. So this project, even before this issue, was, needed the assistance. But will most certainly, will most certainly need it if this becomes a serious problem with these new regs. So I just wanted to offer that. It's definitely going to be delayed. I did recommend to Jamie that he continue with the process. He's invested so much time into it, so has counsel. And it just made sense to at least go for the preliminary resolution.
With the understanding that the super process needs to be completed. So, oh, excellent. Very good. I do have, so there, regarding the application, excuse me, is there? looks like a couple of uh small changes. You uh, the application had a 40 or 41 uh employees total in it. Um, you're saying that might be 37. I'm sort of uh, not a huge difference, but we get to the down to the accurate numbers when we do the um assessment of benefits.
Okay, um, I I apologize. I am slightly speaking off the cuff. I don't have my notes in front of me. Um, it does, the the 41 does include some proposed partnerships with BOSI's and other community colleges uh and trade programs that would um sort of feed us internships and part-time and leading to full-time staff. So I I may have excluded that in my in my numbers.
Um, right. And the other thing that I uh picked up was um, in the, there's a question about whether the project or the location was likely to attract a significant number of visitors from outside Dutchess County. And I understand that is uh core to your business. Um, but um since we we make the case in other applications, particularly uh hotel groups, that um this is, this uh claim is uh founded on on a verifiable projections. In fact, you you have a a manufacturing business, so it's a lot different from a from a tourism business. But um nevertheless, the the application does ask for a third-party market analysis, and I just wanted to make sure we are checking all our boxes and and discussing issues and not leaving stones unturned. Um, I
I'm happy to provide any information you'd like on that. I can offer to you anecdotally that, you know, last week, a tour bus of 20, 24 students from uh City University of New York and their professors came to the mill for a for a tour and a lunch. Um, that of course was an exception, but you know, Renzo Piano and his team flew in from overseas for the Whitney Project. We have clients coming into Pine Plains. Uh, definitely weekly, if not every, you know, a few times a week. Um, they are generally day trips. Um, so they are eating lunch and eating in the in the very few Pine Plains restaurants. But we could try to pull together some data for you.
Well, and just to be clear, so that section of the application is um for a retail determination since IDs are prohibited from um granting benefits for projects where retail sales are involved unless they meet certain exceptions, one of which is a tourism exception. And so um here, we're not concerned about it being a retail project since it's mostly manufacturing. But um, the answer to that question as far as whether people come in, it's still relevant as far as what um you're concerned about, but it's not as though they have to then meet the burden of showing what the attraction to the area is and why it's an exception to retail because retail just doesn't apply here.
Excellent. So this is a kind of detailed discussion to make sure we don't, we're doing our homework properly. Thank you. All right. Does anybody have questions? You
I do not.
Better knowledge of the area.
I I mean, I I do know the area somewhat. It's it's not exactly where I am, but a bit north. Um, no, I mean, I think it's it's a business that's thriving in Pine Plains, and that's an exciting bit of information for Pine Plains, and it's going to rehab something and bring a bladed property to market. I I I don't see a negative or a downside to it, in my opinion.
Well, personally, I have, um, having lived in Stanfordville for in the 90s for 10 or 11 years, uh, know the property well and have watched it just stand still forever. And um, knowing the economy in Pine Plains, this is very much needed.
I just have one question. It's under the $10 million threshold for the uh workforce policy, but I do see that you're requested a $1.5 million from the Empire State Development. Is that contingent to make this deal go through, or is that just a a grant you're seeking?
That was a grant I was seeking. We did not get the full 1.5 million. Um, we are really hoping to proceed with this project. Um, the the pilot pro- the the pilot support would help us make it a reality. Um, we'll also probably have to make adjustments in our design and and, you know, other accommodations as all projects do. But uh, we've already been awarded funds from EST.
Right. And and just how difficult is it going to be with the DEC? I I mean,
It's going to be very difficult. These regulations are affecting projects across the state. Um, and they just came into effect this year. So we're, we're doing everything we can to be creative. I think we lost Jamie.
Yeah, I think we lost.
I just wondered, would you seek an alternative site if this site doesn't go through?
That was my fault. Apologies.
Unfortunately, um, I believe the other site that he was looking at was in Pennsylvania.
Hurts.
Yeah. I'm I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
For some reason, I lost my video.
Jamie, the question, the question was how how difficult the DEC situation might uh be for you, and I said it was going to be very difficult. And also, we asked if if you were looking at alternative site, and I did say Pennsylvania.
How how difficult is it going to be with the DEC? That depends on how well you know Governor Hokel.
More on the record.
You know, this this was a curve ball that we were not expecting just days ago. Uh, it is going to be challenging. We are in touch with the DEC and trying to line up a site visit this month. We have a unbelievable amount of support from the town of Pine Plains and the government officials that Ron mentioned. Um, I hope that they uh understand where we're coming from. It's certainly easier in Pennsylvania where I'm from. I'm from Amish country, Pennsylvania, which has a a great root, deep history of woodworking. Um, and and in sort of agrarian barn culture. Um, so it would be easier, but uh, and not to make light of this, but my company is called The Hudson Company. It doesn't really play well in PA. It it belongs in Pine Plains where we started. So I am an optimist and hope that we can find a solution here.
What is the issue? Like, what is it? A brownfield site? What is the?
This, the site, yeah, the the site has a small amount of wetlands on it that were really kind of dug for agricultural purposes. It's like a the ditch, really, um, that holds water. But it's adjacent to a property that has more than 12 acres of pro- of wetlands. That's not on our par- parcel. That's the next-door neighbor. And because we're adjacent to it, they're more sensitive to it as of January 1st, 2025. We, we are not encroaching upon any wetlands whatsoever. We admittedly, we are encroaching upon the 100-foot buffer to the wetlands. So we're just asking, can we just encroach upon the buffer, which has, we've gotten support from the town? Um, can we encroach upon that 100-foot line so that we can build the sawmill shed and a parking lot for our staff? And a place for trucks to turn around. It to a, I mean, we've, Ron's heard me say this before, we have recycled over 10 million board feet of of wood diverted from a landfill since I started this business. That's, that's almost 1,000 tractor trailers of wood. We are the most environmentally minded, you know, applicant the DEC has probably ever seen. I I hope that that matters, counts for something.
Yeah, you just need a variance for the buffer, it sounds like, right?
Yeah, I I don't know that that's going to be possible. I it's uh, we were told by the professional consultants yesterday that it um this process could take a year at worst case. Um, that doesn't include additional costs, so.
Right.
But uh, hopefully, they'll be able to find a way to mitigate this.
Yeah, hopefully. I'm saying sorry to hear that.
Yeah, actually, the environment, uh, the environmental effects on the property are 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 many from from over the years, it just being a dumping ground.
That's what I was worried about, some things in the ground. You don't know what's there. The next thing you know, it becomes a very expensive.
This project would protect and will improve and protect it. Um, and uh, um, we're just hopeful that the we can work out some kind of an arrangement. Again, it was passed in 2022. Um, and uh, legislators seem caught. The one same ones that passed, it seemed to be caught by Supreme.
Okay.
All right. Well, um, we should proceed with doing our job. Any, in any case, um, if there are more questions from the board, would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval, preliminary resolution for Fifth Generation Partners LLC and the Hudson.
I'll second.
Thank you. Jasmine, will you take the roll?
Brian Berian.
Approve.
Jamie Pecone.
Approve.
Andrew Houston.
Approve. Approve.
Mark Doyle.
Approve. Thank you very much and good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, to be clear, that the public hearing won't be held until the secret process is completed.
Thank you for stating that for the record. Right. Uh, the next item um is the uh consideration of approval and authorizing resolution for 2028 Creek Drive LLC and Bottini Residential Properties LLC uh for the assignment of the facility and benefits previously granted uh for 2328 Creek Drive uh to Bottini Residential Properties LLC. Um, we, this um was not that long ago that that we um authorized um and entered this um agreement with for 2328 Creek Drive and it seemed like a brilliant project. So, oh, excellent. I want to w- welcome you to the, I'm sorry, I don't have
Rodney Weber.
Rodney, yes, thank you.
The original.
The the original according to
No, I mean, he was the, he was the builder.
You were the builder, right, exactly. Um, so um, would you like to go ahead and outline um the prospects of what you're planning here?
Yes, of course. Um, of course, the uh, the Bottini family has offered to purchase our property at Seven Creek, I should say, 11 uh dash 23 Creek Drive. Um, and basically going forward, they um obviously promised to continue what we're, we've been doing and working with DocuWare, who's been very successful on the property. So not only did they um locate their mothership in Beacon, but they've also uh been expanding their jobs and offering the jobs to the people, the residents of Beacon as well as the surrounding area, and well-paying jobs as well. So they're being, they're very successful. Our, our uh company as well has relocated to the property too, and the other commercial aspect of it, we take it over to 3,000 square feet. So and our company is expanding as well, and we'll continue to rent um from Bottini as they take over the, if uh, if everything is kosher, then they'll continue, um, we'll continue to rent from them as well. As well as help them along the way with any hiccups that uh maybe, uh, we've been very uh successful in expanding the Greenway Trail too through the property. So, and we've also created a pocket park um for the area um as well. And everything is flourishing quite well. It's all native species uh pocket parks, so that, you know, the feet and I are quite happy and others that uh visit. And uh, and as we grow what we plan on doing when we, if this goes through, then we have a property down in Madame Brett Park, which is an old uh factory that's about 12 acres. And uh, we would like to push um for a commercial as well as residential development there as well. And we're looking at uh somewhere in the range of 70,000 square feet of commercial and then uh residential. So yeah, it'll give us, this will give us the opportunity to push, push on that. Um, and hopefully, uh, if all works out well, then we'll be in front of planning and zoning before the end of this year in order to uh push that forward and create even further uh further prospects for uh commercial within Beacon. It's nice to have the balance. Uh, you know, Beacon's been more of a a um, a residential neighborhood rather than a commercial neighborhood. So it's nice to be able to finally create that balance. And um, and I think we can push it even further. Um, myself included, I've always been an advocate for walking to work, and I finally get to walk to work and it's, I can just say it's fantastic. I cross the parking lot, I'm there. Sometimes it's a bad thing. For the most part, I do like uh the the ability to be able to walk to work, and so do others that I've spoken to in in Beacon as well.
So instead of decompressing in the car, you decompress on the trail?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Weber, you said you are company, so your company is also occupying the site?
Yeah, so uh
Additionally, DocuWare.
That DocuWare has 20,000, approximately 20,000 square feet, so the first two floors of the building. And then there's a small building right next, right next door to it, and we now occupy that small building.
And that business is?
Is Webber Projects. So we develop and we do construction. We just um agreed to construct another person's uh project as well. We just finished one in Beacon for uh an all-commercial building, 446 uh, 446 Main Street, which was uh three floors of uh commercial and one, one floor residential at top. And then we're now constructing another business right around the corner, 536 uh Main Street, which will be uh three floors of commercial too. As long, along with the other projects that we're doing um ourselves.
So the, so the basis of this sale and benefits is so that you can jump onto the, you said the Madame Brett property? Okay.
Yeah.
And are you selling any of the other two adjacent buildings that you own or the?
Uh, there are
Church Street?
Yeah, so we're selling um the apartment building, uh Seven Creek Drive, as well as, the other one was already sold. That was a condo project.
That's condo, yeah.
Six condos.
Great.
And then along the uh, and then this would, the combination of the two to the Bottini family.
So you'll be off of Creek Drive?
Well, not really, because I'll be living there for the next three years, so.
Great.
I'm I'm definitely uh, be staying there for quite some time. I'll just be the rentee rather than the renter. So finally, I get to call somebody else to fix my toilet.
Fantastic.
All right. Well, it's excellent to have business that is creating jobs and um steady ones right in in the city or Beacon. Um, we have with us on screen uh Mark Bottini. Who is, I don't know, can you hear us, Mr. Bottini?
He's muted. I just need to unmute you. Thank you. Um, I appreciate all your time. Uh, Rodney Weber has been a pleasure to deal with. Uh, we look forward uh to getting your approvals uh so we can add this project to to my portfolio of uh multifamily, commercial, and manufactured homes. Uh, and we we hope to maintain the project as well as Rodney has. And uh, look forward to doing more things in Beacon.
Very good. Do any of you have questions about this transaction? Very good. Um, in that case, we'll look for a motion in a second.
I'll make a, okay, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Amy.
Second.
Lane Berian.
Approved.
Jamie Pecone.
Approve.
Andrew Houston.
Approve.
Amy Bonderdery.
Approve.
Mark Doyle.
Approve. Thank you, Jasmine. Very good. Thank you uh to you both. Good luck with that and good luck finding your next step.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. We appreciate it.
Thanks.
Rodney, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good luck with the rest of your meeting. Thank you. I also would like to say as well, it it's uh, it's nice to see that, you know, um, that other people within the community and they're remaining, you know, he's, Mark, he's definitely uh have his investment here, or the family has an investment here in the Hudson Valley, and they're remaining in the Hudson Valley. So it's it's nice to see that that they're uh contain, continuing to push that going forward. So thank you, everybody, for the opportunity. I appreciate it. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is why we're working to improve quality of life in Dutchess County. Um, right. So, Elaine, thank you.
For having me back.
Hey, for a second quarter metrics uh run-through.
Yeah, quickly.
Kind of fast, with a lot of business to do.
Just looking at the the outcome grid, the spreadsheets there, um, if you are looking at that, uh, everything is already exceeded. Or if it it's under right now, that's because there are things that happened really Q3 and 4. So I'll see you next month for Q3 stuff. So just to let you know, everything is on track. Um, Jamie's favorite number, we got $851 in tax savings per household. Um, that's from um 2024 visitor spending, which hit a record $811 million in the county. More than 10,000 jobs, $98 million collected in state and local taxes. So they're not on their grid yet.
So they're not on their grid yet because I just got those numbers, but you'll see them on the grid next month. Just on the report, the rebranding continues to go really well, be very strong. Social media continues to be strong with collaborative partnerships. Keeping up with that is a lot because it's constantly changing, but we're getting great PR results from the work our team is doing, website growth, even with the transition with the new URL to Destination Duchess, everything continues to be really strong with visitation there. International, we're still working on that. It's challenging. But places that are down, there's other places that are up. So we're kind of seeing a wash there right now. We'll see how that continues going forward with everything that's happening with the economy and international relations. It's, it's an interesting time for tourism, but we have a lot of irons in the fire, including bus groups. So every time you see a bus in a parking lot or hotel, know that in a 24-hour period, they're spending about $24,000 in our county. Having the government shutdown is not good for us. We had a very slow Q1 and 2. Fewer film productions were happening at that time, which boosted us last year. We're hoping to make it up in Q3 and 4 this year, but with the shutdown, that impacts the home of Franklin Allen Roosevelt, the FDR Presidential Library, Bigfoot Mountain, Allen Roosevelt's home. So we've been assisting those bus groups with finding alternate locations to visit. So the people at Locust Grove, Stetsonsburg and Wilderstein are very excited. And they've been doing a tremendous job, working extra to accommodate our visitors and the people that we're supporting. We've had good media in. We did a fam tour on Friday on history tourism. They were supposed to visit the new exhibit at the FDR Library, but we gave them the, the Malane Drive, Walk By The Grounds teaser tour. So they're all excited to definitely come back and spend a lot more time. So we've had really great results with all of that. In terms of the Hudson Valley Film Commission, you may have heard that Lorette Reho, who was the head of it, passed away this year. It was, he kept it very quiet. People didn't know it was coming. And so that also had an impact on the things. We, we knew we were handling a lot more calls, people reaching out to us because we worked very closely with him. But they have a new person in place who we've met with, who seems very, very good. She had been working with him. And so we hope to see that continue and her new connections that she has continuing to work in the industry. So a lot of production is happening right now, a lot of outreach.
Can you just, who, who passed away?
Lorette Reho was the head and essentially the Hudson Valley Film Commission.
Okay.
So I'm sorry about that. Yes. Yeah, it was, it was pretty quick.
So they work with you?
Yes. So the funding comes, there's $25,000 that goes. So we work with Film Duchess and we help a lot with connecting with municipalities, connecting with services, connecting with hotels, locations, all those kinds of things. But they're the ones doing the meets with directors, the going out, soliciting, trying to pull films in, working, networking and bringing in that industry side. So it's been a very good partnership over the years and we expect that to continue based on the meetings that we have.
Are we, are we back to the pre-strike hotel rooms or no? Or filming and?
They're getting there. Not as much. It's, it's been really challenging.
Okay.
But we're getting there. And we're seeing good. We'll be able to capitalize on some of the productions that have filmed here already. If you saw Next Gen Chef on Netflix, it's, it's, so are you? I gotta look for it. I gotta watch it again now. It's very, very good. It is, is like a true love letter to the campus and the region and the valley. It's beautiful. And so as we capitalize on those things that were filmed last year and they took up a lot of hotel rooms last year when they were here and filmed, they were here a long time. And so we love these series. There's multiple series. They're already planning on coming back. Who've been here before because they had such a good experience here. It's just a matter of when it happens. The Trump administration has wanted to put tariffs on anything filmed outside of the area or any part of it outside the US. So that's having weird impacts on certain things. It's, it's an odd thing that the, the film industry trying to navigate in terms of how they're and where they're filming things. So will we benefit by having more here? Perhaps. But it's curious. It's something we're watching. And the additional film tax credits, the extension and expansion of those from the state government has been very helpful in keeping productions here from going to Massachusetts or New Jersey or Toronto. We still miss Georgia, but Georgia's Georgia. And they have, that's what they have, put all their eggs in that basket. So that continues to go forward and be strong. You can see 32, almost 3,300 room nights just in Q2 alone. And we'll get more of that coming in. The name of the new director of the commission, her name is Stacy Cormier Major. Artsman Hudson continuing to go strong. Their grants have been administered. There is a chart on page 12 of the report that shows their attendance by zip code, half, just under half of people are within Duchess, but you know, 18.4% coming region wide and then the remainder coming from outside the area. So their programs continue to attract visitors here and expand the arts for all of us. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I could add two things that have just come up. There was a project that Malane's familiar with and this body actually incentivized almost 10 years ago and that was the then Oberge project at Grassmere. It, that, that failed and then Soho came in and a very protracted permitting process stalled. I've just gotten word from the, the owner of the property that they believe they're in agreements and that project looks like it may be resurrected and they will be coming before the IDA. And again, and it's a testament to the, to that market that, that tourism still brings in, that high-end market and they're looking for a place to stay. Also Silo Ridge just completed their two-week, second-year master's equine program as well as a car concourse. I heard both. Those two events, as well as the concerts that they held, were extremely successful and probably will be, that success will be reflected in your next quarter numbers. But they intend to keep building on this. And this, this project itself is, is very attractive to the one and only that's coming in because of the amenity that it provides for their guests that are going to be staying at their property. So we've been seeing some connections between East and West Duchess with our projects that we've incentivized and also the industry.
It's really important to have those higher-end properties because for so long we didn't have any of that at all. And we were losing all those high-end spenders to outside counties. And so once we develop that, then they can come and spend and still go to our shops. So it's like diversifying your own 401K, making sure you have, you know, budget-friendly options and then that mid-level and that high level. So when there is an economic downturn, those people who have money spent are still traveling, they're still coming, they're still spending money. Whereas we're seeing people tighten their wallets. Looking at our, our hotel numbers this quarter, we're seeing occupancy up 2%, but spending is way down. Because there's, they have a certain pot of money that they have to spend. The addition of additional municipal occupancy taxes are pulling away from that spending in our visitors, in our retail establishments and at our restaurants. So if you've only got so much to spend and you're spending extra on extra taxes that weren't there before, it's having a big impact. Hotel rates this time of year, spot checking this past weekend, which was Columbus Day weekend, rates are, for a Holiday Inn, you know, are $500 plus a night. So it's, we were doing Hotel Week for $99 a night in January. I'm just saying, you wake up and have, have a cheap stay and go spend in our restaurants. So that is a promotion that we're going to work on again, that the hotels are excited to do. We have at least 15 signed on already for that January promotion to get people to come to that slow time of year.
Very good. Well, it is fascinating to hear the, how all the parts of Duchess County come together and improve again our viability, financial feasibility for business and quality of life.
It's a difference. Thank you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So we want an update, please, on the Business Excellence Awards.
That's, that's for to vote for a table, to spend $1,500 on a table for the IDA, which they do each year. So just.
Can I have a motion for that then? A motion to spend $1,500 out of our budget.
I'll make a motion for that.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. Move, Jasmine.
Brian Berrien.
Approved.
Jamie Focan.
Approved.
Deidre House.
Approved.
Amy Bondedieri.
Approved.
Mark Dorn.
Approved. Thank you. Right. So we are going to, at this point, suspend but not end the IDA meeting and continue on through to the, and get, go back into IDA. Did we vote to come? Yeah. We have to vote to come into IDA meeting again, I think.
Yeah, to open the up.
To reopen.
Reopen.
Yeah. So a motion, please, lots of motions.
I'll make a motion to reopen the Duchess County IDA meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Amy Bondedieri.
Approved.
Deidre House.
Approved.
House. Jamie Focan.
Approved.
Brian Berrien.
Approved.
Mark Dorn.
Approved. Excellent. So in this case, I'd like to see if there's a motion to elect our executive director, who would be the same person as the, the same person as the CEO of LDC.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Thank you very much.
Approved.
Deidre House.
Approved.
Approved.
Brian Berrien.
Approved.
Mark Dorn.
Approved. Thank you. Are there any other further comments? Thank you, Ron.
One more item, Mr. Chairman, really quick. I had mentioned changes to the application before. We received some comments from the public about a few issues with the application or applicants. Went through it thoroughly, made some changes, but then in working with the council's office, found, identified some others. And in the interest of making this the most transparent and accountable application process, we like to, I'd like to bring all of these to the policy committee to formally go over them before implementing them. So the, we'll, I'll bring that up at the, the next committee, all of the changes that have been proposed.
Well, thank you. And that, unless there's an, you'll, John?